Heavenly Father, we come to this evening as humbly as we know how, thanking you for the blessings you bestow upon us as a city. We ask you to continue to bless our citizens, especially those persons who are up against different tragedies, financial situations in their lives. As we recognize this Sunday as the 50th anniversary of the 16th Street bombing in Birmingham, Alabama, we're thankful that things in this country have changed and are getting better. These are all the blessings we ask in our name on me.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Burford?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Dr. Wibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Nguyen?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. Thanks to all of you for coming out here this evening. For those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions, the process that we will follow tonight is the first thing we're going to do is take up the one public hearing that's on our docket. At the conclusion of that, we will move directly to the consent agenda, and there are three items there. The council may vote on all of those items in one vote, and then we'll move to the regular agenda. We have a number of items there, 18, including one quick add-on to appoint someone to the Eastern Virginia Medical School Board. We'll vote on all of these matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of the regular agenda, that's the formal docket, if any member of the public would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, you'll be given that opportunity. But in order to have your name called, you must first have signed a slip of paper, which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. We do have one ceremonial matter, though, before we get started, and we're glad to welcome Mr. George Homewood. Mr. Homewood, are you here? There you go. George is actually the American Planning Association's Virginia chapter president. I didn't know that, George, but you're going to present us an award, right?
Yes, sir.
Even though you work for us, so, manager, we like that. Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Jones, one of the great pleasures of being the president of the Virginia chapter of the American Planning Association is the opportunity to help celebrate the great work being done by both professional and citizen planners throughout Virginia. In communities all across the Commonwealth, plans, projects, programs, ordinances have been and are being developed and implemented with a positive impact on those communities and their citizens. Annually, the chapter recognizes the best of the best of those efforts, and it is my privilege to be able to help celebrate the selection of Plan Norfolk 2030 as the outstanding comprehensive plan for a large city in 2013. The awards jury singled out several positive attributes of Plan Norfolk 2030 as especially meritorious. First, the entire plan is focused on implementation. Too often, comprehensive plans are static documents relegated to bookshelves with little bearing on future decision-making. However, it is apparent that throughout Plan Norfolk that the ability to implement was the primary consideration from the outset and not just an afterthought. Establishing metrics to be used in measuring outcomes is both innovative and meritorious. The plan is truly comprehensive. The responsibilities for implementation are spread from city council to the city manager through every single department in Norfolk city government, while also recognizing that Norfolk exists as a vibrant component of a much larger region. The plan addresses real issues head-on. In an era when far too many would prefer to ignore controversial subjects such as climate change and sea level rise, Plan Norfolk 2030 recognizes the already documented impacts of these phenomenon on the city and offers prescriptions for the future to manage them. The plan preparation included documenting effective community outreach and participation with more than 500 unique comments being received, reviewed, and responded to. Finally, the awards jury noted that Plan Norfolk 2030 was a staff and planning commission-driven effort that did not involve the use of consultants. On behalf of the awards jury, the board of directors, and the entire Virginia chapter of the American Planning Association, I am privileged to present to the city of Norfolk the Outstanding Comprehensive Plan Award for a Large City in 2013 for Plan Norfolk 2030, and at the same time, thank you for your support of effective planning in the city of Norfolk.
Great. Thank you. Thanks very much. George, thank you. I think what you said a moment ago about this being staff-driven and also driven by the and guided by the planning commission has a lot of truth to it. We know that you and Frank and everybody in the planning staff worked awfully hard on this, as did the planning commissioners, and we think we got a great document. I think we're supposed to update this every 10 years?
Actually, about every five years, sir.
Every five years. I don't think we updated ours for maybe 25, 30 years, something like that. So, I know it was a big effort. You had to go back a long way to actually bring it up to modern standards, so we appreciate that.
If I might, there's a number of people who were involved in the development of the plan are here tonight, and may I ask them to stand?
Sure, please. Yeah, thanks. Okay, thank you all. There's Lenny back there.
Aye.
We don't see Lenny anymore.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Man, okay. Aye. Our two? Thank you all for coming down.
An ordinance accepting the donation of a 2014 Ford Explorer valued at $26,369.08
We appreciate that, and thanks again for all of the great work. Okay, so, that concludes the ceremonial portion of the docket.
in reimbursement of the cost of the installation of emergency equipment on the vehicle in
We'll move to public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day to hear comments on the conveyance of an amount not to exceed $5,000 from the United States Marshal Service to the city to support the city of Norfolk's interests, if any, in certain lots known as 1320 Bolton Street the police department in authorizing the use of the vehicle for city purposes. to Christopher Atkins and Lakeisha Atkins.
There are no members of the public signed up to speak at this public hearing, so if Michael Muhammad?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, or evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and manager.
there are no questions from the council, the clerk will call the roll.
I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Christopher Atkins and Lakeisha Atkins of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city of Norfolk pursuant to Section 58.1-3970.1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement.
I wanted to speak on this issue regarding the vehicle being transferred to the police
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
department in hopes that that vehicle won't be used to respond to calls that will result
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
in the death of citizens.
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
As you know, just a few days ago, Commonwealth attorney, Mr. Greg Underwood, decided that
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our one, an ordinance granting a pedestrian commercial overlay district development certificate
there was no evidence to pursue criminal charges against Officer Matthew A. Watson
to permit the renovation of an industrial building and conversion to mixed uses at 935 Woodrow Avenue.
for the death of Mr. Joshua Johnson from May 20 shooting at the Wells Fargo Bank.
Robin Thomas is here. She's the architect to answer any questions, as is Patty Letchworth, who is the applicant. All right, you can call the roll.
Though I know you all, council members, have no reach or authority on this issue, this
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
is the town square, and for that reason, I wanted to appeal to your good conscience
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
to review this and join the family and the community in asking that the Norfolk Circuit
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Court judges from that court take the position that Judge Charles Poston took with the Community Service Board case, and that is to remove the idea that there was nothing there that needed further review and panel, a special grand jury to review. The Commonwealth attorney, Greg Underwood, has proven on more than one occasion that he is incompetent, and this is why Judge Poston saw fit to review that case further that resulted in charges. This case has a lot of unanswered questions. His report was incomplete. The community is definitely not pleased. This particular report definitely bears witness to my early statement that Officer Watson shot his partner, Officer Williams, and because of that, there's some things that need to be reviewed further, and I think it would be done with the removal of political impropriety or the appearance thereof, I should say, being that this is an election year and Mr. Underwood is up for reelection. It would be in the best interest of the city of Norfolk and the citizens of Norfolk to have further review and not let this rest, since we have an absentee Commonwealth attorney who has yet to prosecute one case in over six years of being the Commonwealth attorney. This gives us cause for pause and not to have a bearing of witness to his finding. I end that by saying, my first entree into public life and public service was at the age of 14 years old at Booker T. Washington High School, where I organized a walkout of the entire student population, the black student population. Right before that walkout was to occur, I went to the principal's office, and I tried to warn the principal of what was about to occur because I could stop it seeing as how I called it. I come here today in like-manner, really appealing to you all to see what's coming and do something to help stop it. If not, I have no control over stopping what's coming. But I do ask your indulgence in reviewing what has been released, and, Mr. Manager, you, being the authority of the police department, reviewing what have been released with an officer, Matthew Watson, who shot a fellow officer but a few weeks later assaulted a fellow officer. I think that that case needs further review, and it would be in your best interest to review. Thank you.
All right. Okay, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our three?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 44850, accepting and appropriating $692,491 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs for the Aid to Localities Program for fiscal year 2013. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our three?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 44850, accepting and appropriating $692,491 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs for the Aid to Localities Program for fiscal year 2013. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our three?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 44850, accepting and appropriating $692,491 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs for the Aid to Localities Program for fiscal year 2013. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our four?
An ordinance accepting $5,000 in grant funding from FM Global for the purchase of equipment and supplies for arson investigations by the Department of Fire Rescue and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of funds for the purchase of the equipment and supplies for arson investigations. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
I'm the president of this foundation. Does that matter? It's a million-dollar gift.
It's not a conflict.
Okay, aye. All right, our six?
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an entertainment establishment on property located at 4019 Granby Street, and by 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mike Diaz is here to answer questions, if anyone has any, as well as Craig Patterson is here. Okay, you can call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our seven?
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit mixed uses on property located at 701 South Main Street and 106 to 120 West Liberty Street, and by 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our eight?
I have a question on our eight. Is this time-sensitive that we have to deal with this? Because we were supposed to have a presentation tonight from the, I think, about this performance barn, and I had some concerns.
It's a contract.
Performance contract.
Oh, the contract, yeah, contract. But I had some concerns about this, and I, we didn't get the presentation. So, is it possible to put that off?
Council Riddick, I'm going to have Sarah Page Fuller address that in terms of the timing.
Sure. Unfortunately, we can't put it off because it needs to come before a vote, before the end of September, and this is your only voting session.
Okay.
Can we vote next week? When we have our informal?
That meeting is one where you could vote. You don't customarily, but it's possible.
I'm uncomfortable with voting on it without the president being presented.
Right.
That'd be great.
All right, then the motion is to continue one week.
Right.
Right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our ten?
An ordinance accepting $100,000 in USDA program reimbursement funding for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014, from the Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice for the USDA School Nutrition Breakfast Lunch and Special Milk Program for the food service operation at the juvenile detention center, and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the funds for the program at the center. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Where we are, 11.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the conveyance of a 30-feet utility easement to Hampton Road Sanitation District relative to the Lafayette River Crossing project from Luxembourg Avenue to the Virginia Zoological Park in Norfolk, Virginia, and approving the terms of the deed of easement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our 12?
An ordinance approving and authorizing the conveyance of a variable width temporary construction easement to Hampton Road Sanitation District relative to the Lafayette River Crossing project, and approving the terms of the deed of easement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our 13?
An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 25.1, Division 3 of the Norfolk City Code 1979 regarding use of metered parking spaces and hours of operation so as to provide for the veterans' paid parking exemption. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Paul, can I say something?
Sure.
Yes. This is, and I'm going to congratulate Development, Mr. Andrews here, and John and his committee's work. These are the committees that came about, as the mayor may recall, that you asked that we have, Veterans Affairs and the Economic Assistance with Veterans. And this really is a great example of the type of work that having somebody like Mr. Andrews on Development means and what it means for the city. Tremendous to be able to have this and to see it through from the administration point of view. I'm going to ask you and task you, John, we had mentioned in the past the issue of the helicopter crash that occurred with the SEALs on that, and I'm going to ask you to get to please get together with the manager and see about a memorial for that particular event over where we have, by the Wisconsin, where we have the other memorials for other tragic naval events, even though it may not have been all SEALs. But if you, if I would just ask that he and the manager get together and see if we can find somewhere within our budget to make that happen. That affected the community immensely, and it should be there with the other tragedies that have occurred in this Navy town. So, if we could, Marcus, get together with, those committees do such a great job, and this is one way we can make sure that that, in compliance with public art, that we get that and make that happen. So, let's not forget that.
Well, I would say, though, that I think we need to be broad here. I mean, I think if we're going to, and I certainly champion your idea, but I think we have had some other, I mean, the coal also, do we have a memorial for that?
Yeah, they're all there. They're all there. It's basically.
So, this is the only one that has not been done?
Right.
There's a plaque that sits on the granite stone, and it's just in a semicircle. I think it would fit nicely.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were being all-inclusive.
No.
Thank you.
Trust me, it's not my own idea. It's, they're already there for other tragedies that have happened.
Good, good.
And this is the most recent. So, I'd ask that we get together and not let that slip by because time is going by. Thank you on that. And this is, again, great job for that committee's work. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Our 15, please.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale by the city of Norfolk, Virginia of up to $275 million in general obligation refunding bonds to refund earlier bond issues and other general obligation debt of the city.
Just a second. Dan Montague. All right, Mr. Manager.
You want me to start now?
No, I mean, he's, you know what Dan's going to say. What are we doing? But I think this deserves an explanation. Okay, it's big enough.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and Mr. Jones. My name is Dan Montague. I live at 4605 Creek Street here in the city of Norfolk. I see that you're going to put out $275 million, over a quarter of a billion dollars in bonds, you know, to keep the city going. Now, over a month ago, I gave you guys a copy of this, and that is the senior citizens' tax relief that you aborted. And the thing is, if you can do this, how come we can't get the senior citizens' tax relief back along the guidelines that I gave you? People in this city are hurting, especially seniors. I'm hearing more and more every day. And anyway, I'm going to start visiting some of them, and anyway, when I get it all down on paper, you are going to get a room full because the thing about it is, as you get older, you get more bills that you cannot afford. People think raising kids is hard, but anyway, when you've got doctor bills and all this other kind of stuff, you know, and you always got to keep your house up and everything else, then, you know, when you're young, you can do the work yourself, but then when you get old, you can't do it all. So, you know, this is what I'm saying. None of you on council know what seniors go through yet, and the thing about it is, we need this reinstated just as quick as humanly possible. Thank you.
Dan, I would just say that your comments are not falling on deaf ears, the mayor. We talked about looking at the program. tenable solution to address the concerns of all would be to set the offset at a distance from an occupied residential building. I would recommend 25 to 30 feet as being reasonable for both parties. This would maintain distance and ensure that chicken coops aren't on the side of the house in plain view from the street. I've also seen the issue of attracting vermin and thus disease raised. I believe this is much ado about nothing. Animals are claimed to be drawn to the neighborhoods, raccoons, possums, rats, et cetera, are already here. My neighbors and I receive a nightly visitation from all of these. The likelihood of disease from these will not be increased by having hens. Indeed, free-roaming cats are more likely to be the recipient and transmitter of any zoonotic diseases. A greater attractant to these vermin are those free-roaming cats and the food that people put out for them. I'm more concerned by the people putting out food as an attractant, because that brings the vermin right up next to the houses. Last, are the issues of noise and waste, both being byproducts of having animals. As stated, households are allowed four dogs, cats, and rabbits here in the city of Norfolk. Each of these creates as much or more waste as an equal number of hens. The advantage with hens is that their waste is more suitable for composting, thus making our backyard home gardens more productive. The waste of all three of these allowed animals, dogs, cats, and rabbits, can contain worms or protozoa that are transmissible to humans. How many people in this city pick up after their dogs in the backyard? Judging by the sidewalks, not many. As for noise, that would be mitigated by not allowing roosters, which I understand is already a consideration. Hens generally only gently announce that they've laid an egg, and that only once a day. Since they would be in a nesting box in a coop, it isn't likely anyone would hear them unless they're in the backyard. I would like to see reasonable restrictions that alleviate these concerns of non-chicken owners, yet open up for the greatest number of people to possibly be able to keep in hens for benefit of their families. There are resources available to help people meet any guidelines that are set, such as the local county agricultural extension agents.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Britt McReynolds?
Good evening. I don't want to be repetitive, so I'm gonna kind of scan what I was gonna say. I support what Alan and Anthony both said. And thank you very much for having us tonight. I'm a third-generation Norfolk resident. I've been in Oceanview my whole life. I went to school there. I went to ODU. My father just retired a week ago from the city of Norfolk after 30 years. So we love this city, and we have roots here. My husband and I are raising eight kids here. They're all in public school. It's important to us, what happens to the city. So my points are, we have a small lot. We have 7,000 feet. That's it. But we have plenty of room for chickens. We have a dog, and we want four chickens. So my point is that I would like to see it lowered.
Eight children?
They don't all live at home. Some are grown. Actually, we have one leaving for the Navy next week. So I would like to see it lowered. I would like folks like me that live in a small house, on a small lot, live normal lives, go to work every day, take care of their families and their kids and their yards, to be able to have chickens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Miranda O'Neill?
Can y'all see me?
Sure.
Good evening. My name's Miranda, and I live at West Little Creek Road for the past eight years. All of you have received your packages stating the positive points concerning having backyard hens. You have also had a chance to read emails and listen to others that have very valid points. I do believe that we've made it clear that there are benefits to having backyard hens. I want to speak to you from my personal experience. I never in a million years thought that I would own a hen, but I was asked to babysit a baby chick because there was no room for it in the coop. I had no idea that that little chick would think that I'm its mommy. She followed me everywhere and wanted to be under my feet. Needless to say, I fell in love. I got her a friend because I could not be with her for 20, be with her 24 hours like she wanted. Both are all grown up now and laying eggs. They are my family, and they make the best pets. When I sit outside, they come and sit with me, as well as my Doberman and the cat, too. We are all family. They still follow me around. They come when I call them, and they actually listen better than my cat. They are easy. The proposal that is on the table eliminates many people in Norfolk. I can understand the quantity limitations, but I do believe that the size is truly unjust. I have just under 10,000 square feet, but my chicken run is bigger than the chicken run that was at my old work, which they had over 100 acres at their disposal. So just because you have more land does not mean the chickens would have more land. Chickens don't need a lot of space. They need 1.5 square feet inside the coop and eight square feet for outdoor run. I do believe that the people that are here are your average people from Norfolk. The average citizen of Norfolk does not have 10,000 square feet. All I ask is that you take it into consideration of lowering the lot requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Mullen?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Mullen, and I am a property owner of 2626 Marlborough Avenue in Chesterfield Heights. And we've heard a lot of facts tonight, but I would really like to share with you the fact that chickens really brought our neighborhood kids together. They built the coop, they painted the coop, and they lined up on the sidewalk outside my house every night to be able to come and get the eggs. Chesterfield Heights is a food desert. So for the garden, the backyard garden, and that chicken coop represented a food oasis. So when I wasn't really paying attention to what was in the refrigerator, I could always know that I could go out to the back, fry up an egg, and have a salad. Let me tell you, I was on a tenth of an acre, and I had three dogs, and the chickens were less work, less mess, and less noise. For four months, we raised 14 chickens on a tenth of an acre illegally. We called 15 times for a permit, begging, pleading, with obviously no permit to be had. And when finally Animal Control found us, he said, "This is the nicest yard I've ever been called to." Unfortunately, we decided chickens were important enough to our family that we moved to Suffolk. So my efforts to be green are now 35 miles in a Prius, as opposed to living in my really wonderful house in Chesterfield Heights. So right now, I own 90 chickens. Still, they're less work, less noise, and less mess than my dogs. But I really am supporting the effort here for Norfolk to have chickens, because at some point, I'd like to move back. Thank you.
Kayline Smith?
Good evening. My name is Kayleen, and I reside at 5264 Texas Avenue. It is my pleasure to be able to meet each and every one of you. I am grateful for your leadership and your guidance of our wonderful city here in Norfolk. I would like to introduce a little bit about myself. I'm a mother of three children. I homeschool my 13-year-old, and the other two go to public school here in Norfolk. And I'm a wife of a husband who served nine years in the military here in Norfolk, and we moved from California to be here. We have lived in Norfolk for almost 10 and a half years, and we considered moving back to California but decided that Norfolk was our home now. We just love it here. And we considered moving into neighboring cities to be able to have chickens, but we decided that our church home was also important to us, since my husband is called to be in the ministry. And our church home is off of Little Creek and Military Highway. I come before you to ask that you consider allowing hens in Norfolk. I grew up on a farm as a kid. We owned chickens, and we owned pigs, and horses, and geese, and ducks, and pretty much anything you can think of. I used to put diapers on my chickens when I was a kid and sleep with them. And they were my pets. They were my best friends. I believe that chickens bring joy, but not just joy. They have an effect on our community as well. In parts, they bring food, and they bring down the pests. I'm sure you guys have seen in the handout. They also bring the benefits of teaching our children more about where their food comes from, as opposed to like my daughter, who's 13. It would be wonderful to be able to teach her a more, I guess, healthy approach on how to, you know, I guess, introduce her to more ways of where our food comes from. I would just, I'd just encourage you to please revise what we have brought before you, and thank you so much for considering our requests.
free to make comments if they'd like, or they can wait till they vote, or they don't have to make any.
I have something to say.
Yeah, I do, too.
Why did I know that?
Okay, go ahead.
Wait, wait, yeah.
You go, Tommy.
Work our way around. Sure. I realize that the chicken issue has been a brunt of many jokes on council. But as you can see from the people who came out today, and thank you for coming out, it's a serious, and it's the reason why Dr. Whibley and I have been advocating for this, because we've talked to people like this have come here today because of how important it is to them. I'm not happy with the ordinance today. I think that 5,000, like other cities have done. I realize that this was more of a compromise. In fact, I would love to vote against it, because it's not what we asked for. I'm also disappointed that it took so long for it to get to this point. There's no other issue, since I've been on council, that has taken this long to get to a point of where we're voting on it. And I'm not counting the last month, because people were absent from meetings, so we couldn't vote on it. And I think that we should have involved the public more in this. There's lots of people here that are experts on this. They know what we're doing. I was at a function this weekend, and over by Botanical Gardens at a house in which they had bees. And they have bees because we voted on that ordinance. And during the party, with about 100 people there, the bees were going around, and I didn't feel threatened. There was one time. But the lady that lived there was so happy that we had allowed that and what it's done. And I know there were some people up here that questioned bees as well. And I think the same thing's happening with chickens, but they're not getting a fair shake with it. So one of the things that I'm asking with this is that a year from now, the council, during this time this year, that we engage the people that are here and ask them to work with the city on looking at the guidelines and the parameters. So this is a start, and to do this, whether it's by permitting. We have an animal advisory board that would probably love to get away from TNR and other issues and maybe talk about chickens.
Oh, no, I don't.
And I think that, you know.
I'm not doing this.
That we talk, well, then if you're not gonna do it, then I would like to recommend that we go down the 5,000-square-feet.
No, that was a compromise. The administration originally recommended an acre. This is a compromise on that.
Well, who knows where we are a year from now? Maybe we'll come.
I mean, look, anybody can bring up.
I think that, like I said, we have people here that know what they're doing, and I think that we should have engaged them before this, the day that we're voting on this. And you heard the facts, and they gave us information, and I think it's just pretty sad that we reached this point. And I can tell you that the letter that came from the Public Health Director Department was completely wrong and awful, and misleading the city on that. There's tons of people that could take the information that's in there and say how wrong and inaccurate it was. It was more of a scare tactic to say that the city couldn't do it because it's a health issue. However, Portsmouth was able to make it happen. I am gonna vote for it, because it is a start.
And I just was, I agree with Tommy. I think when this initially came from the administration to council, I think there were like three lots in the whole city that could put, I mean, it was just very restrictive to the number of lots of individuals that would have chickens within their yard or in their curtilage. If I think it was 80 in the whole city, it was pretty close. It weren't that many. We did go through a lot of discussion about this. And I think part of the reason, and I think that we have to come up, why do we come up with 100 by 100? 100 by 100 has been traditionally what we would look at within the city as something of a suburban lot. There are a lot of lots within the city of Norfolk that compromise 100 by 100. Many of them are, as we go out of the downtown, out of the Ghent and Larchmine areas, but even there are some there. But as we go more out, it does afford that. And I agree with Tommy. Who knows where we are a year from now? I've been very supportive of this. I've wanted this since it first came to council, I think through Terry and through Tommy, and have been looking forward to us being able to have this vote. As I mentioned, Paul, just now, who knows where we are a year from now? And I do want to say this. We can say that Ms. Mullen's come back. You know, this is your time to come back to Norfolk. And I say that because I think that we are far more progressive than many of the cities around us and throughout the state. I know that there's one city in the state that I frequent often, and they're a fairly rural city, and they took their ordinance off. They didn't even discuss it, never came to vote, which surprised me. So we are progressive. We continue to be progressive, and I think that this has been a compromise that we could get everybody to. We couldn't go to 5,000, we couldn't do the acre. So we had to come up with a size of a lot that met as many people within the city as possible that we could, you know, make this happen. So for those of you that are slightly smaller in your lots, I'm sorry. But again, maybe in the future, we can always revisit this. But I'm very happy as to where we are right now.
Dr. Whibley, did you?
Well, first off, your t-shirts are very cool. They've got little chickens on the mermaids, right? They're very cool. I'd love to have one. This should have been a decision based on science, and I'm really troubled by, I can't figure out where 10,000 square feet actually match the science. Your arguments that you made regarding the number of dogs, which produce much more waste, much more noise, have no limits, including to the water, and setbacks. So I really am very puzzled by how anybody came up with 10,000 square feet, and I'm disappointed that we did that and ignored good science. That being said, you know, there are a lot of points here that you've broached on that I think are also very important on this, and one that I'm passionate about, and that is that people in our community should be able to, to the best of their ability, to be able to know what their food sources are. And there are many of us that feel very strongly about that, to say nothing of just having better tasting eggs. But for those of us that are passionate about this, I'm gonna keep working on this. I'm disappointed we're at 10,000 feet. I'm disappointed we have the setbacks we have. I'm disappointed on the reasoning that was used to make this ordinance. But I'm also a big girl and know that compromise is sometimes necessary to get this ball rolling, or egg rolling, maybe. So I'm hopeful that we'll look at this egg issue again, at the least in 12 months. But I think we'll all discover as a city, just like we did with bees, that this is not a big deal. And people that want to know where their food sources come from have the right for their city to provide that. And I think we'll all be here a year ago and say, "What was the big deal?" Year from now. And so I promise that we'll do everything we can to help you with that.
Is there a way, is there a way that perhaps, in just sitting and listening to the speakers, people who have chickens, people who have chickens now can maybe register somehow and be grandfathered if they don't meet the 10,000-square-foot requirement? I mean, if they already have them, and maybe somebody from Animal Control or whoever's going to be regulating this can go out to their homes? I mean, it seems to me like we could at least give those people, we could at least make those people who are technically illegal legal, and not make them give up their chickens if they already have them, and they don't have the minimum, because this is kind of after the fact. And we do grandfather when we do things, you know, for buildings and other things, you know, when we make new rules and new ordinances, we do grandfather for other things. So why not give a period of time, maybe 30 or 60 days, for people to register with Animal Control or the Health Department or whoever that they currently have and have had chickens successfully? Let their, let them be inspected or whatever, and allow them to keep what they already have. And then, from this point going forward, it's 10,000 square feet to whoever.
and any other restrictions council sets to be allowed to have hens. I will use my residents as an example. I reside in a duplex which sits on a 14,400 square foot lot, which under the current proposal will allow this property to have up to four hens. Of course, if my neighbor wished to have hens, then we would each be able to have two hens. I realize not every duplex is just as not every single-family dwelling would be allowed to have hens. The residents of Norfolk who wish to have hens should not be restricted doing so because they cannot afford to buy or rent a single-family dwelling on a large lot. Finally, I would also like to ask council to remember that under current ordinances, a resident of Norfolk, no matter what size lot they have or type of residence they dwell in, may have the following without permits or restrictions: four dogs, four cats, and four rabbits, without any restrictions, setbacks, or lot size requirements. A Norfolk resident may increase the number of rabbits up to eight after obtaining a permit which requires no inspection, setbacks, lot size, or restrictions. So why should those wishing to have hens be subject to such restrictions to own hens still puzzles me. Norfolk has always been the leader in Hampton Roads area being progressive and inclusive of all its citizens, yet we fall very short on the backyard hen movement. I ask council to please consider what I've proposed tonight. Thank you for your time and consideration on backyard hens for Norfolk.
Anthony Speed Spite? I'm sorry.
Spade.
Spade, sorry. Cut it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Anthony Spade. I live at 1222 Pascal Place. A little about myself, I have a degree in animal science. I've worked in agriculture and production, and I've spent the last twenty-three years working in the field of food safety. I want to thank you, first of all, for considering the issue of keeping backyard hens in Norfolk. Keeping hens provides many benefits for families, and you've all heard those. I would like to address some concerns to alleviate those that are some of those issues that are held by people that are opposed to keeping hens. In the matter of offsets, I believe ten to fifteen feet from a property line is too restrictive. This sort of offset would leave me with the choice of either a usable backyard or no hens. I would either have to cut down a tree, which defeats the purpose of being environmentally friendly, or put the hens in the center of the yard, or not have hens. I propose a more tenable solution to address the concerns of all would be to set the offset at a distance from an occupied residential building. I would recommend twenty-five to thirty feet as being reasonable for both parties. This would maintain distance and ensure that chicken coops aren't on the side of the house in plain view from the street. I've also seen the issue of attracting vermin and thus disease raised. I believe this is much ado about nothing. Animals are claimed to be drawn to the neighborhoods, raccoons, possums, rats, et cetera, are already here. My neighbors and I receive a nightly visitation from all of these. The likelihood of disease from these will not be increased by having hens. Indeed, free-roaming cats are more likely to be the recipient and transmitter of any zoonotic diseases. A greater attractant to these vermin are those free-roaming cats and the food that people put out for them. I'm more concerned by the people putting out food as an attractant because that brings the vermin right up next to the houses. Last are the issues of noise and waste, both being byproducts of having animals. As stated, households are allowed four dogs, cats, and rabbits here in the city of Norfolk. Each of these creates as much or more waste as an equal number of hens. The advantage with hens is that their waste is more suitable for composting, thus making our backyard home gardens more productive. The waste of all three of these allowed animals, dogs, cats, and rabbits, can contain worms or protozoa that are transmissible to humans. How many people in this city pick up after their dogs in the backyard? Judging by the sidewalks, not many. As for noise, that would be mitigated by not allowing roosters, which I understand is already a consideration. Hens generally only gently announce that they've laid an egg, and that only once a day. Since they would be in a nesting box in a coop, it isn't likely anyone would hear them unless they're in the backyard. I would like to see reasonable restrictions that alleviate these concerns of non-chicken owners, yet open up for the greatest number of people to possibly be able to keep in hens for benefit of their families. There are resources available to help people meet any guidelines that are set, such as the local county agricultural extension agents.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Britt McReynolds.
Good evening. I don't want to be repetitive, so I'm gonna kind of scan what I was gonna say. I support what Alan and Anthony both said, and thank you very much for having us tonight. I'm a third-generation Norfolk resident. I've been in Ocean View my whole life. I went to school there. I went to ODU. My father just retired a week ago from the city of Norfolk after thirty years, so we love this city, and we have roots here. My husband and I are raising eight kids here. They're all in public school. It's important to us, what happens to the city. So my points are, we have a small lot. We have 7,000 feet. That's it. But we have plenty of room for chickens. We have a dog, and we want four chickens. So my point is that I would like to see it lowered.
Eight children?
They don't all live at home. Some are grown. Actually, we have one leaving for the Navy next week. So I would like to see it lowered. I would like folks like me that live in a small house, on a small lot, live normal lives, go to work every day, take care of their families and their kids and their yards, to be able to have chickens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Miranda O'Neil.
Can y'all see me?
Sure.
Good evening. My name's Miranda, and I live at West Little Creek Road for the past eight years. All of you have received your packages stating the positive points concerning having backyard hens. You have also had a chance to read emails and listen to others that have very valid points. I do believe that we've made it clear that there are benefits to having backyard hens. I want to speak to you from my personal experience. I never in a million years thought that I would own a hen, but I was asked to babysit a baby chick because there was no room for it in the coop. I had no idea that that little chick would think that I'm its mommy. She followed me everywhere and wanted to be under my feet. Needless to say, I fell in love. I got her a friend because I could not be with her for twenty be with her 24 hours like she wanted. Both are all grown up now and laying eggs. They are my family, and they make the best pets. When I sit outside, they come and sit with me, as well as my Doberman and the cat, too. We are all family. They still follow me around. They come when I call them, and they actually listen better than my cat. They are easy. The proposal that is on the table eliminates many people in Norfolk. I can understand the quantity limitations, but I do believe that the size is truly unjust. I have just under 10,000 square feet, but my chicken run is bigger than the chicken run that was at my old work, which they had over 100 acres at their disposal. So just because you have more land does not mean the chickens would have more land. Chickens don't need a lot of space. They need 1.5 square feet inside the coop and eight square feet for outdoor run. I do believe that the people that are here are your average people from Norfolk. The average citizen of Norfolk does not have 10,000 square feet. All I ask is that you take it into consideration of lowering the lot requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Mullen.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Mullen, and I am a property owner of 2626 Marlborough Avenue in Chesterfield Heights. And we've heard a lot of facts tonight, but I really like to share with you the fact that chickens really brought our neighborhood kids together. They built the coop. They painted the coop, and they lined up on the sidewalk outside my house every night to be able to come and get the eggs. Chesterfield Heights is a food desert. So for the garden, the backyard garden, and that chicken coop represented a food oasis. So when I wasn't really paying attention to what was in the refrigerator, I could always know that I could go out to the back, fry up a fry up an egg, and have a salad. Let me tell you, I was on a tenth of an acre, and I had three dogs, and the chickens were less work, less mess, and less noise. For four months, we raised 14 chickens on a tenth of an acre illegally. We called 15 times for a permit, begging, pleading, with obviously no, no permit to be had. And when finally Animal Control found us, he said, "This is the nicest yard I've ever been called to." Unfortunately, we decided chickens were important enough to our family that we moved to Suffolk. So my efforts to be green are now 35 miles in a Prius, as opposed to living in my really wonderful house in Chesterfield Heights. So right now, I own 90 chickens. Still, they're less work, less noise, and less mess than my dogs, but I really am supporting the effort here for Norfolk to have chickens because at some point I'd like to move back. Thank you.
Kayline Smith.
Good evening. My name is Kayleen, and I reside at 5264 Texas Avenue. It is my pleasure to be able to meet each and every one of you. I am grateful for your leadership and your guidance of our wonderful city here in Norfolk. I would like to introduce a little bit about myself. I'm a mother of three children. I homeschool my 13-year-old, and the other two go to public school here in Norfolk. And I'm a wife of a husband who served nine years in the military here in Norfolk, and we moved from California to be here. We have lived in Norfolk for almost 10 and a half years, and we considered moving back to California but decided that Norfolk was our home now. We just love it here. And we considered moving into neighboring cities to be able to have chickens, but we decided that our church home was also important to us since my husband is called to be in the ministry. And our church home is is off of Little Creek and Military Highway. I come before you to ask that you consider allowing hens in Norfolk. I grew up on a farm as a kid. We owned chickens, and we owned pigs, and horses, and geese, and ducks, and pretty much anything you can think of. I used to put diapers on my chickens when I was a kid and sleep with them, and they were my pets. They were my best friends. I believe that chickens bring joy, but not just joy. They have they have an effect on our community as well. In parts, that they bring food, and they bring they bring down the pests. I'm sure you guys have seen in the handout. They also bring the benefits of teaching our children more about where their food comes from, as opposed to like my daughter who's 13. It would be wonderful to be able to teach her a more, I guess, healthy approach on how to, you know, I guess, introduce her to more ways of where our food comes from. I would just I just encourage you to please revise what we have brought before you, and thank you so much for considering our requests.
Sure. Thanks for coming down. Thank you, Kayleen. That concludes the list of folks who signed up with all the names I have. So if there are any council members, feel free to make comments if they'd like, or they can wait till they vote, or they don't have to make any.
I have something to say.
Yeah, I do, too.
Why did I know that?
Well, wait, yeah.
You go, Tommy.
Sure. I realize that the chicken issue has been a brunt of many jokes on council, but as you can see from the people who came out today, and thank you for coming out, it's a serious, and it's the reason why Dr. Whibley and I have been advocating for this, because we've talked to people like this have come here today because of how important it is to them. I'm not happy with the ordinance today. I think that we took 5,000 like other cities have done. I realize that this was more of a compromise thousand. In fact, I would love to vote against it because it's not what we asked for. I'm also disappointed that it took so long for it to get to this point. There's no other issue, since I've been on council, that has taken this long to get to a point of where we're voting on it, and I'm not counting the last month because people were absent from meetings, so we couldn't vote on it. And I think that we should have involved the public more in this. There's lots of people here that are experts on this. They know what we're doing. I was at a function this weekend in over by Botanical Gardens at a house in which they had bees, and they had bees because we voted on that ordinance. And during the party with about 100 people there, the bees were going around, and I didn't feel threatened. There was one time. But the lady that was lived there was so happy that we had allowed that and what it's done, and I know there were some people up here that questioned bees as well, and I think the same thing's happening with chickens, but they're not getting a fair shake with it. So one of the things that I'm asking with this is that a year from now, the council, during this time this year, that we engage the people that are here and ask them to work with the city on looking at the guidelines and the parameters. So this is a start, and helping to develop a plan on how we can get to the point where we can allow more citizens to do this, whether it's by permitting. We have an animal advisory board that would probably love to get away from TNR and other issues and maybe talk about chickens.
Oh, no, I don't.
And I think that, you know.
I'm not doing this.
That we talk talked. Well, then, if you're not going to do it, then I would like to recommend that we go down the 5,000 square feet.
No, that was a compromise. The administration originally recommended an acre. This is a compromise on that.
Well, who knows where we are a year from now? Maybe we'll come.
I mean, like, anybody can bring up.
I think that, like I said, we have people here that know what they're doing, and I think that we should have engaged them before this, the day that we're voting on this. And you heard the facts, and they gave us information, and I think it's just pretty sad that we reached this point. And I can tell you that the letter that came from the Public Health Director Department was completely wrong and awful in misleading the city on that. There's tons of people that could take the information that's in there and say how wrong and inaccurate it was. It was more of a scare tactic tactic to say that the city couldn't do it because it's a health issue. However, Portsmouth was able to make it happen. I am going to vote for it because it is a start.
I and I just was, I agree with Tommy. I think when this initially came from the administration to council, I think there were like three lots in the whole city that could put, I mean, it was just very restrictive to the number of lots of individuals that would have chickens within their their yard or in their curtilage. If I think it was 80 in the whole city, it was pretty close. It weren't that many. We did go through a lot of discussion about this, and I think part of the reason, and I and I think that we had to come up, why do we come up with 100 by 100? 100 by 100 has been traditionally what we would look at within the city as something of a suburban lot. That is, there are a lot of lots within the city of Norfolk that compromise 100 by 100. Many of them are, as we go out of the downtown, out of the Ghent and Larchmine areas, but even there's some there. But as we go more out, it does afford that. And I agree with Tommy. Who knows where we are a year from now? I've been very supportive of this. I've wanted this since it first came to council, I think through Terry and through Tommy, and have been looking forward to us being able to have this vote. As I mentioned, Paul, just now, who knows where we are a year from now? And I do want to say this. We can say that Ms. Mullen's come back. You know, this is your time to come back to Norfolk. And I say that because I think that we are far more progressive than many of the cities around us and throughout the state. I know that there's one city in the state that that I frequent often, and they and they're a fairly rural city, and they took their ordinance off. They didn't even discuss it, never came to vote, which surprised me. So we are progressive. We continue to be progressive, and I think that this has been a compromise that that we could get everybody to. We couldn't go to 5,000. We couldn't do the acre. So we had to come up with a size of a lot that met as many people within the city as possible that we could, you know, make this happen. So for those of you that are slightly smaller in their in your lots, I'm sorry. But again, maybe in the future, we can always revisit this, but I'm very happy as to where we are right now.
Dr. Whibley, did you?
Well, first off, your t-shirts are very cool. They've got little chickens on the mermaids, right? They're very cool. I'd love to have. This should have been a decision based on science, and I'm really troubled by, I can't figure out where 10,000 square feet actually match the science. Your arguments that you made regarding the number of dogs, which produce much more waste, much more noise, have no limits, including on to the water, and setbacks. So I really am very puzzled by how anybody came up with 10,000 square feet, and I'm disappointed that we did that and ignored good science. That being said, you know, there are a lot of points here that you broached on that I think are also very important on this and one that I'm passionate about, and that is that people in our community should be able to the best that their ability to be able to know what their food sources are. And there are many of us that feel very strongly about that to say nothing of just having better tasting eggs. But for those of us that are passionate about this, I'm going to keep working on this. I'm disappointed we're at 10,000 feet. I'm disappointed we have the setbacks we have. I'm disappointed on the reasoning that was used to make this ordinance, but I'm also a big girl and know that a compromise is sometimes necessary to get this ball rolling, or egg rolling, maybe. So I'm hopeful that we'll look at this egg issue again at the least in 12 months, but I think we'll all discover as a city, just like we did with bees, that this is not a big deal. And people that want to know where their food sources come from have the right for their city to provide that. And I think we'll all be here a year ago and say, "What was the big deal?" year from now. And so I promise that we'll do everything we can to help you with that.
Is there a way, is there a way that perhaps in just sitting and listening to the speakers, people who have chickens, people who have chickens now can maybe register somehow and be grandfathered if they don't meet the 10,000 square foot require, I mean, if they already have them, and maybe somebody from Animal Control or whoever's going to be regulating this can go out to their homes? I mean, it seems to me like we could at least give those people, we could at least make those people who are technically illegal legal and not make them give up their chickens if they already have them and they don't have the minimum, because this is kind of after the fact, and we do grandfather when we do things, you know, for people for buildings and and other things, you know, when when we make new rules and new ordinances, we do grandfather for other things. So why not give a period of time, maybe 30 or 60 days, for people to register with Animal Control or the Health Department or whoever, that they currently have and have had chickens successfully, let their let their be inspected or whatever, and allow them to keep what they already have. And then from this point going forward, it's 10,000 square feet to whoever, you know, wants to acquire chickens, you know, in the future. I think that might help at least some of the people who are represented here who already have chickens, which is make you legal. I don't know.
Can we? Yes, no?
I mean, I'm not the attorney, and I don't want to be the bad guy, but I don't think you grandfather illegal uses. I don't think you can do that. I don't think.
Well, we can make them legal if we make a clause there. I mean, we, when I ask questions, they always tell me it's the will of the council.
The nightmare of allowing 30 days for anybody with any size lot to run down and get a permit would defeat the whole purpose of our trying to put some restrictions. It's not just for the people who want chickens, but it's also to give a little bit of room for people who don't want chickens. You know, so I mean, I.
I don't get any room if I don't want dogs. No, it's totally the exact same thing.
No, it's.
Totally the same.
It isn't. Okay.
Totally the same thing.
Okay, well, I would, you know, there's nothing in the, if you want to bring an ordinance back, next time we have a night meeting to grandfather these people, we'll see if you can get enough votes.
I mean, I think it's at least worth it.
You could take care of that with 5,000 square feet.
We can vote, yeah, we can vote on this now. And I mean, but but the thing is, is though, I do believe that no matter what we do, there's going to be somebody who's not going to make the cut. I believe that. I believe that if we make it at 5,000 square feet, we're going to have somebody comes in here, and they're going to say, "Well, we've got 4,975 square feet, and, you know, we've had chickens for five years." I mean, so somebody's going to get cut off no matter what.
Whibley and I, when we started talking about this, said that below 5,000 was too little anyway. That was when we looked at some of the information.
I'm just saying that people who have successfully done it and have done it for, you know, however, you know, existing now, maybe to just give them an opportunity to, you know, to have it. I think no matter what we do, we're going to have a cutoff. There's going to be somebody that's going to be, you know, out of the loop, no matter what number we, you know, we come up with. But if folks have them, and they've they have had them, I mean, I don't know what proof you show that you've had chickens, but I mean, what, I don't know. But I just think there might be something we can do to accommodate those people also.
We couldn't swing that vote. When we discussed this, and I remember we couldn't, we were trying to get somewhere, those of us who wanted it less and those of us who wanted it more, we couldn't get it to below that. So we had to. So that was a number, though Terry does say it is, yeah, it's as arbitrary probably as anything. I don't know if we're based on science. We were just wanted to.
We were trying to come up with something.
I mean, I don't want chickens next door to me either. Y'all are all nice people, but I don't want chickens next door to me either. But I'm just saying, you know.
I would ask.
Vote on it, and then we can see where we move into the future with it as it is. I mean.
Like I said, there's an opportunity to engage a group of citizens who really want to.
Who will be very engaged.
Make this work for the city. And I think that Winter, who's the lead on this, the guy behind you with the bow tie, you guys give him your name and contact information. You can join the Facebook page and get all the information you want on it.
Is that Hen Nation?
Yeah, no. Backyard hens for Norfolk.
Okay. Go ahead.
Dispense with the charter requirement, free in the ordinance and adopt. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I hate to vote against such nice people, but I vote no.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
No.
Okay. And I hate, I mean, it has, it's not personal, I promise you. I just can't, I can't see it. All right, okay. Art, R17, please.
An ordinance to schedule a city council meeting on Tuesday, September 17, 2013, at 2:00 p.m. Dispense with the charter requirement, free in the ordinance and adopt.
I'm not going to, we knew you. It's next week, and I will not be here next week.
Oh, we should have voted on chickens then.
Yeah.
Actually, we can always vote again.
We're watching, Paul.
You don't need me. I mean, you know, it makes no difference.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R18.
An ordinance to change the starting time of the regular weekly city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September 24, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. to September 23, 2013, at 9:00 a.m., and to move the location of said meeting. Dispense with the charter requirement, free in the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Frame?
Aye. Okay. Well, thank you all for coming down. We have an add-on.
I have an ordinance, Resolution Number R19, and it's a resolution appointing Julie L. Damon, M.D., to the Board of the Medical College of Hampton Roads for a certain term. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
That concludes the formal portion of tonight's agenda.